Hesitant today is because I don't have glasses. So I'll be mimicking. Thanks, everyone. At this time, I would like to call to order the September 8th, 2022 work session of the MARTA Board of Directors. And with our Chair's report, may I have a motion for approval of the August 11th, 2022 work session minutes? May I have a second? Let us vote. So move the motion for acceptance of the August 11th, 2022 work session minutes has been approved. Under our Chair's report, I want to share a partnership with both Microsoft and the City of Atlanta, as well as members of organized labor that took place on this Labor Day weekend. I think it's very important because our own represented labor union, ATU, was very much a participant as well. And that's the ACP program, which is the Affordable Connectivity Program, where we actually went in conjunction with Microsoft and the City of Atlanta to the Housing Authority to offer those who qualify for the program, that they would be able to sign up for the program, and if they use public transit to come to the event for the signing, that we also reimburse them with our own MARTA cards that we, me, as a Board of Director member, have. And those other Board of Directors that had additional cards that I asked if they would be able to support that program by donating their cards did offer to do so as well. So I think it's very important. We were able to sign up quite a few residents of the City of Atlanta that qualified for that program. So I thought it was very important to know that MARTA participated in that program, and we were able to offer that service to many of the residents, not only of the City of Atlanta, but any of those that qualified that signed up through the program. And also thanks to our partner, Microsoft. At this time, I'd like to turn over to our interim GM/CEO, Mr. Colley Greenwood, for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to start by publicly thanking the MARTA ambassadors for stellar work on our system over the weekend. They supported our traditionally heavy Labor Day weekend, the crowds for Dragon Con and the college football opening games at Mercedes-Benz Stadium. We had over 46,000 riders ably managed by 80 transit ambassadors. So I just wanted to thank them for that in this forum. I also wanted to acknowledge our CFO, Raj Srinath, on the recent upgrade in our bond credit rating from Fitch Ratings. So MARTA received an upgrade in its bond credit rating given by Fitch. After demonstrating sustained maintenance of liquidity and financial resilience, Fitch upgraded MARTA's issuer default rating, the IDR, and outstanding sales tax revenue bonds from a AA- to a AA typically, which is typically the top bond rating that a transit agency can achieve, signifying that the authority is unlikely to default on its debt repayments. So Raj, that happens because of the good work of you and your team, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.[246.18][246.18](APPLAUSE).
I also wanted to thank Manjeet Ranu for his service to MARTA. Manjeet announced this week that he's taking a new position with a private sector firm to be announced at a later date. We thank Manjeet for his good guidance over the last 18 months and wish him well in his continuing career.[265.72][265.72](APPLAUSE). I wanted to talk also about peer city tours. Many of you know that we'll be taking the DeKalb County CEO and the county commissioners and other DeKalb stakeholders to San Diego next week for a tour of peer cities to look at their freeway-running BRT and their light rail systems. So that's from September 14th to 16th. And then the following week, we'll be taking the Clayton County Commissioners and stakeholders to Indianapolis for a similar trip, September 21st to 23. On the agenda, you'll find reference to the Employee Town Hall. On September 12th, from 10:00 a.m. till noon, and from 6:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m., we'll be having Employee Town Hall sessions, starting here in headquarters, followed by a roadshow series of meetings throughout the fall in the garages to thank, update, and continue engagement with our employees. So these conversations are part of a broader plan to ensure that MARTA employees know that they're valued and make intentional space for two-way dialogue. Some examples of that bigger picture will include the recently restarted General Manager Monthly Breakfasts with 15 to 20 employees at each month. We'll be launching full-scale employee retention surveys in October, so our research and analysis teams already building that survey with input from both the represented and non-represented workforce. We've also established that all non-represented employees were given a 3% cost of living adjustment in March, and raises ranging from 3% to 5% were awarded in July based on performance reviews. All represented employees, of course, received a 2% raise in February as part of a contract extension negotiation. And then the current contract ends this year, and we'll give an update on labor negotiations later in the work session. And lastly, I'm thrilled to share that MARTA has been notified by APTA that our MARTA Heroes' Recruitment Video Campaign is the winner of a grand award as the best marketing and communications tool to highlight transit needs and funding. The award will be presented at the APTA Transform Conference in October, and we will make sure that we have a number of frontline employees on hand at the conference to accept the award. At this time, I'm going to ask Paula Nash to make her way to the podium. And while Paula's doing that, I'll just remind everyone, this is a diversity and inclusion briefing that she'll be giving. I'll remind you that in December of last year, we told you that despite having reached established goals, we would continue working towards improvement of our small business participation, both race-conscious and race-neutral initiatives. I remember in March, at the Atlanta Technical College, I went to an event called Planes, Trains, and Automobiles. And Russell McMurray was there from GDOT, Frank Rucker was there from the airport. And we were basically giving small business, you know, the lowdown on how to do business with industry in Georgia, how to make the most of the funding that was coming forward through the IIJA. And it was well received. But when the session was over, a few people came up to me and said, you know, "It sounds good in practice, but there are some hiccups that MARTA needs to be aware of." So I came back to Paula and said, you know, "Can we start working on something?" And shortly thereafter, Director Blakely said she had heard some feedback from the community as well, that, you know, MARTA could do more to improve that rapport when it comes to small businesses. So as a result of that, on Friday, September 9th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it's the first time we're doing this in four years, MARTA will be holding the DBE Small Business Roundtable. We'll have about a dozen representatives, and Paula will speak to this. And it's a chance for them to calibrate perspectives on the process and a candid and collective discovery of successes and opportunities for improvement from the group. I'll also ask Paula to talk about the ATL Transportation Bonding Education Program, the BEP, which is kicking off on Tuesday, September 13th, which is an eight-week certification program to improve the outlook and conditions for small business in general. So with that, our Executive Director from the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, Ms. Paula Nash.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Scott, Mr. Greenwood, members of the MARTA Board. I'm Paula Nash, the Executive Director of Diversity and Inclusion. And as Mr. Greenwood has told you, I'm here to speak about two upcoming events here at MARTA. The first one is the DBE Business Roundtable. Next slide, please. I should say, DBE Small Business Roundtable. Mr. Greenwood gave you some information about how this came about. I do want to also say that Board Member Blakely has been working with my office as we've been putting this together. But this is an event that's designed to give small businesses the chance to have an open and candid conversation with MARTA on issues and concerns that they have experienced while doing business with MARTA. Even though we only invited a small number of businesses, it's our hope that these businesses will address, you know, concerns that are common through the business community. The session will be used to gather recommendations, suggestions, and ideas. And as Mr. Greenwood told you, it's scheduled for tomorrow, September 9th, from 1:00 to We purposely kept the event small in hopes of getting a meaningful and manageable dialogue going. We want people to feel comfortable with providing information for us. This is going to be a safe place to bring their concerns. Thirteen small businesses were invited, and these are businesses that are either currently doing business with MARTA or have recently been doing business with MARTA. We attempted to get a good mixture of businesses. They're not all construction-type companies, but many of them are and that are working on capital projects. But we also have businesses such as a tire company, a janitorial service, mobility transportation service. So we tried to get a good mixture there. This will be done largely as a listening session. There will be a question-and-answer period as well, and we will have a limited number of MARTA staff there to help answer some questions and also hear what is being said. So this will include certain C-team members, as well as representatives from Diversity and Inclusion, Finance, Contracts and Procurement, Legal, and Capital Programs. And of course, Ms. Blakely will be there as well. At the end or after this session, there will be a follow-up or takeaways document that will be provided to the participants of this. So if you happen to hear from businesses that say that they're disappointed that they didn't get one of these coveted invitations to this event, tell them, "Do not fear, there will be more." So this is something that we plan to do on a regular basis, at least annually. So the next event I would like to speak on is the Atlanta Transportation Bonding Education Program, or BEP. Next slide, please. This is scheduled to have its kickoff at MARTA on Tuesday, September 13th, from 3:00 to 5:00. So this is a program put on by the US DOT to help small businesses become bond-ready. As many of you know, becoming bondable is a challenge for many disadvantaged businesses. And this program aims to help businesses grow by obtaining or building bonding capacity. As stated on the slide, BEP's mission is to increase small businesses' economic competitiveness to maximize opportunities by becoming surety bonded. And this will allow them to compete for more transportation-related contracts. Ultimately, the purpose is to help businesses build capacity. We want them to bid on larger contracts and even start bidding as primes. Next slide, please. Besides building bonding capacity, there are other benefits to this program, which include receiving information on upcoming transportation projects, and also an opportunity to meet with Small Business Association bond sureties. So those are, you know, a couple of the key benefits that also will come out of participating in this. This is an exciting event, and it's been held in various regions throughout this year. The last time that this event was held in Atlanta was in 2016. So it's been a while since we've had this particular event here. Next slide, please. The program is hosted by the Greater Atlanta Economic Alliance and is funded through the US DOT's Mid-South Atlantic Small Business Transportation Resource Center. So what is MARTA's involvement in all of this? MARTA is one of the stakeholders, and then you see the others that are listed up there: SCANS, the City of Atlanta, GDOT, Small Business Association, Clayton County, Cobb County, DeKalb County, and Fulton County. But MARTA is one of the stakeholders that has been working with the Greater Atlanta Economic Alliance in putting this event together. And in fact, this event will be an eight-week event of classes with a certification given at the end. The classes will be all virtual, but the kickoff event and the closing event will be live events. The kickoff event will be the one hosted by MARTA Tuesday. And at that event, the participants will get to hear about upcoming MARTA projects that will be happening in the next couple of years. And they will also get to meet representatives from SCANSKA, which is a prime on MARTA's Five Points Transformation Project. So MARTA and SCANSKA have had previous events together that we did at Industry Day earlier this year. And as it relates to the BEP program, SCANSKA will actually be the stakeholder that will host the closeout event in November. That will be somewhat like a graduation, but it will also have networking opportunities for the participants. So, again, this is an exciting event for us, and we hope that there are plenty more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any... I'll ask Chair if there are any questions of Paula.
Yes, Mayor Floyd.
Well, yeah, I'll stick my nose into this, Paula. But one of all, I'm glad to see you're doing this bonding. Haven't been in the contracting business for a long time. Bonding is a lot more to it than just deciding you want to go get a bond. And bonds can cost more for some people, come contracting companies, than they do for other contracting companies. So as MARTA deals with this, they need to figure out some way to help the small business person. Because first thing you got to do is you got to hire an accountant, because you got to have an audited financial statement. That's got to be presented, and they have to be... Financial information has to be presented to the bonding company on an ongoing basis. And the amount of a bond that a person can get is totally based on that financial capability plus history. And so there's a lot of things going on here, more than just... I mean, as a small business person, I could say, "Yeah, I'm going to go get a bond." And it may cost... If I've got $1 million in the bank, it may cost me $5,000 to get this bond. If I got $2,500 in the bank, it may cost me $3,000. I mean, it may cost me four or five times as much to get the same bond. So I think as you present these programs... And I know, I'm not telling you something you don't know, okay? I understand that.
Yes, sir.
What I'm trying to do is to set the stage for this as a comment that somehow, we've got to figure out a way to help people do this, not just understand the process, but help them go through that process. And I'm not sure what all that figures out. I've seen people struggle with this for years. Small businesses of all different kinds, colors, makes, and all that struggle with it over time, because it's not an easy process. It's a great idea to do this, but I think you and the other people have to understand, as they do, that there's a lot more to this than just, "Oh, yeah, I'm going to go get a bond tomorrow." So anyway, I encourage you to... I encourage... I'd be interested to see what kind of comments you get from these people and what kind of reaction they have to what you're trying to do here. So anyway, I commend you for doing this. Thank you for coming in here and presenting this to us. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Any other? Ms. Blakely?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
My screen here is not working today. Go ahead.
So I just want to thank Colley and Paula for working with me on bringing this roundtable to fruition. I've mentioned it earlier to Jeff before, and to actually see it come to fruition, and you guys working hard behind the scenes, making sure that the right people in the room. I just really want to commend you and thank you guys for doing this.
Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Just a comment. When you go through your roundtable, I think that's important to hear from the people what are the barriers. But I've seen this time and time again, that when you have a selection process for an agency, it's so typical to have the same criteria, whether it's a $100 million project or a $200,000 project. And I would just suggest, if there's a way to dovetail with the procurement, that you could have a lighter, more user-friendly selection process for small firms. And I think some of those proposals, if you could spend $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, and I know my old firm has, and you'd spend huge amounts of money in their documents that are hundreds of pages. So if there's some way I would use the word, maybe dumb down the selection criteria for the smaller projects, it would certainly help these small businesses and small disadvantaged businesses to compete.
I will definitely put that down as our first comment and recommendation.
All right. One comment I might add to that, and a question really, Paula. Does MARTA have a way where we... Certain level of projects do not have to bond? Or are we required to bond any kind of a construction contract or anything else?
I believe for the construction ones, we are required. I think there's other people that might be here to answer that better.
Ms. Andrews?
We do, but Mr. Hunt's going to speak more eloquently than yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Absolutely. By state law, if it's over $100,000, we're required to have bonding in place. We've done all sorts of creative things with Dean and I and Paula's office and folks to structure those more creatively for our smaller firms.
Is that a federal law?
Local, state, state.
So how would we change that?
Outside of this room, the legislature...
It'd be a state legislative job?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Chair. I would ask for the next slide to go up. I just wanted to go over our recent federal visits. Slide deck, thank you. And to the next slide, please. This slide really just outlines the result of efforts that MARTA has undertaken this year since January. And, you know, just to cut to the chase, it's $92.5 or $92.95 million in competitive funds that's been secured since January of this year. And it's an extensive list there. When you add to that the additional $40 million that we'll receive in formula funds, you'll see that the future is bright for MARTA in terms of the level of funding that we're receiving. But beyond the numbers, beyond the charts, I wanted to just speak to the next slide, speak to the fact that these are really the result... Next slide, please. These are really the results of a lot of effort that is happening behind the scenes. So MARTA is at the forefront when opportunities are being considered, and so it's more than just a quantitative benefit, there's a qualitative benefit to the reputation that we're building as an organization. We have supportive strategic, political, and industry partnerships. And you can see here that recently, on August 11th, we had Mitch Landrieu join us, and Nikima Williams joined us at Five Points to talk about that $25 million raise grant. Next slide, please. But we're also ready to deliver for a determined and deserving community. And here you see FTA Administrator Nerea Fernandez and Region Four Representative speaking to us about the $19 million award for our loan O buses as well. So again, that's just, you know, the pictures say more than the charts do. And next slide, please. When I say this, and I'm saying thank you here, but really, thank you means so much more. Thanks to the board for your indulgence in this session, but I'm also thanking the great staff at MARTA for the work that they do in bringing these numbers and these engagements about in our city. We have great staff, they're very knowledgeable in the landscape of available funds, they're relentless in their pursuit of those funds, and the way they rally our internal resources to make sure that we make the most of these opportunities. They're comprehensive and thorough in their grant submission and follow-up process, in their lobbying of external and government stakeholders for the cause, and as always, they're professional in their rigor surrounding this ever-important step in the process. I'm also thankful for the partnerships. Our federal partners, when they're deciding what initiatives to fund, they do look at things like our unified approach, and I'm grateful to the demonstrated successes that come with that. So unified with GDOT and the City of Atlanta, our county administrators, ATL, ARC, all the various people that we work with, these are things that actually make a difference. And it's a difference that's important, because I don't have to say it here, but transit is a worthy investment. It's a palpable need for this investment. Having transit-enabled people in our region's important. Traffic is a choke point of future growth in an otherwise expanding economy, and so MARTA does its part to reduce that. We're hitting all of our sustainability goals, and we generate $1.4 billion in economic activity in Georgia every year. So it's a win-win scenario, and we're just proud to play our part in that. So with that, Chair, I'll return it to you.
Are you going to go over the upcoming events?
Thank you, Chair. If I can turn your attention to the upcoming events, I won't go over the, you know, the standard board committee meetings. They're in your packets. But I will say that we have the MARTA Accessibility Committee Virtual Meeting on Tuesday, September 13th. We have Lindbergh Station Soccer, a launch event that's happening on Saturday, September 24th, right here at our soccer field, and that's at 8:00 a.m. till 2:30 p.m. We also have the Edgewood-Candela Park Final Phase and Grand Opening of the TOD on-site with community celebration. So that's happening on Thursday, September 29th, at 3:00 p.m. at Edgewood-Candela Park Station. And of course, the Riders Advisory Council is meeting in person here at the atrium on October 5th at 6:00 p.m. Finally, I'll mention that the APTA Transform Conference is happening in person in Seattle, Washington, on Sunday, October 9th, and it goes till Wednesday, October 12th. And at that session, actually on the Saturday, in the executive session, Aaron Parker, widow of Jeff Parker, will be speaking to the APTA executive about resilience and taking care of yourself and your employees. And so we're looking forward to that session, and Chair Scott will actually be there to introduce Aaron at that event. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I did have a quick question in regards to the recent federal visits, and that is, I noticed we had a grant for the MARTA fresh markets. Are we required to now be year-round because of the grant, or will the fresh markets be taking place, continuing through the winter, or...
I'll ask Jacob Vallad to answer that question.
Yes, we are year-round. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sure. So we have a transit-oriented development there at Edgewood. It's been opened in various phases with residential installments. And this coming Thursday, September 29th, is the final phase. So we'll have ribbon-cutting, community celebration, and just really, it's the grand opening, if you will, the culmination of the various phases of stages of opening.
About a week ago, walking through there, trying to get through there, it's a pretty good chore to try to figure out how to get around if you're going back west from there. It's pretty interesting, but it is a very nice project, nice site, and I think they did a good job in there.
Thank you. I think they say the best way to get to and from there is on the subway.[1751.01][1751.01](LAUGHTER). Thank you, Mayor Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor Floyd. And if you all don't mind, I'm going to revisit the Chair's report now that I see Russell McMurray has joined us. I believe you're supposed to share one of your jokes with us?
All right, Chair. That's pretty bad, because my family hates my jokes. So I'll pick on engineers, and that may offend one of you on the board, or two of you, or three of us. But, you know, an engineer's glass is neither half-full or half-empty in life, it's just twice overdesigned.
He shared so much at the meeting at the Georgia Tech, I thought it would be nice to have one of his jokes to start us on the chair report. Thank you, Mr. McMurray.
Madam Chair, I have two questions before we move. So first question for Colleen, in regards to the peer trips that are happening for DeKalb and Clayton, when will those happen for Fulton County?
I don't have any immediate plans for Fulton County. We'll have to go back and, and regroup and talk about the, the need for that and timing and, and such.
So what, what necessitated the need for DeKalb and Clayton?
There've been discussions, in fact, I'm not sure if there's anyone in the room that can speak to it more directly, but in terms of the history behind that, maybe Melissa can talk you through it.
Sure. The, the DeKalb and Clayton trips were necessitated by the current stage of our planning process with them. And Fulton hap, the Fulton Peer Cities trip happened before I came onboard, so it would have been maybe twenty-seventeen? Yeah. And it was done, it was done along, during their transit planning process.
We went to LA.
Yes. But we can certainly take a look at the, at the schedule. And DeKalb also went, I believe, in twenty-sixteen. There's a pretty new group of commissioners in DeKalb, and that's true also in Clayton. And so that's what's prompted these two right now.
So with the upcoming South Fulton projects, can we give consideration to doing something similar? I'm not sure if it's just commissioners, or if the elected officials are also invited, but just so they understand, and just to get ahead of, you know, kind of what happened with Campbellson, Campbellson Road, to make sure that we get out ahead of that and we have clear communication, they understand, you know, the products, the process, and the, and product of what we're working towards.
Sure.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to add, I believe it has to be requested as well by the elected officials in conjunction with MARTA. Is that correct? Is that correct, Mr. Grandwood?
That's my understanding.
Okay, understood, understood. And then the second thing is, thank you, Monty, for all of your commitments to South Fulton, the resources, the time that you guys have dedicated to those projects, and even your personal time out riding the trails and just understanding the dynamics of South Fulton. And more selfishly, will you be around long enough for my briefing in September?
I'll be there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to move into executive session? Thank you. Let us raise our hands. Thank you. At this time, we'll move into executive session.
For the record, we're going to be going into executive session for personnel litigation and real estate, just for the record.
Thank you.
Board of Directors Meeting. Has everyone signed in, noted? Thank you. Mr. Andrews? He's not here. Do, I believe I've been told we had one public comments via email or voicemail. From Ed Williams. I, Justice here? Pardon me? Okay. Ms. Huff receives it as well.
Oh, okay, okay.
She's stating that there is one. Okay, and I believe we have someone signing in at this time?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to read the statement regarding our public comments. "The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed forty-five minutes. If the forty-five minute time limit is reached before the public comments are completed, public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will commence. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting." And I do believe, do we have the... We're receiving the one public comment at this time? Thank you, and that will be Ms. Mona Muhammad. Thank you, Ms. Muhammad.
Thank you, thank you guys. So, good afternoon, MARTA Board. As many of you guys are familiar with my face and the story that I've been talking about for the last few months, it's the Campbellton Road Corridor. You guys have already moved on with the decision of implementing bus rapid transit on Campbellton Road, even though many of the people in the community have stated that they want light rail transit, as well as many, majority of the NPUs state that they would like light rail transit. But this is not the first time that the people in the community have told you guys they want light rail transit. It's been going on for many years, and you guys, to me, gave an empty promise to our former mayor. You guys wrote a letter to her that's on your website that says, yes, we're gonna do light rail transit right before the penny tax got passed. If you're familiar with your website and you go on your more MARTA projects, you guys talk about how Campbellton Road would be getting a high transit project, and right below it, you guys would talk about how Clifton Corridor is getting light rail transit. Your words are powerful and your actions are even more powerful. It shows that you guys were never gonna give us light rail. It was just a discussion to have. Wasting our time coming up here telling you that we want light rail. You guys are collecting the money saying that you would've given us light rail, but you're not. This is not the first time that people like you guys have come into the community saying that money will go there and you won't. Those people over there represent Atlanta, and they're not even looking up to see me talk. They argue when you wanna talk about Campbellton Road needs to be discussed. Manjeet Beck there came into my community and told him that if the money that Campbellton Road had in tax dollars, we wouldn't have nothing. We don't. But yet, he makes our decisions. The people that work on your project management team have come into the community and even told our pastor when asking correct information, they misled him. You guys are wrong all across the board, and I know you guys aren't gonna do what you promised. I've been verbally told that you guys can afford bus rapid without the federal funding. You guys ask questions amongst each other saying that what will happen if they don't get federal funding? You said you'll just get the bus. It shows. You guys are a walking PR crisis, and it's just so sad that you guys don't care, but you should be aware of what's going on. It's a race issue. That's it, I'm sorry. But thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, ma'am. Apologize for being tardy. We have one email public comment.
We have one email public comment from Mr. Ed Williams. He has sent it, it'll be put into the minutes verbatim. It's a rather lengthy email regarding his ongoing RTCAA contract litigation, the claims for, of an open meetings violation, as well as questions related to the Clayton County project manager position, as well as a litany of other complaints and concerns. But again, verbatim will be placed into the minutes, as well as it's been sent to your emails for your review.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. May I have a motion for approval of the August 11, 2022 Board of Directors Meeting Minutes?
I move that the August 11, 2022 Board of Directors Meeting Minutes be approved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
It's already seconded.
Great, thank you, and let us vote. The motion is approved, the minutes will be accepted. At this time, we will move forward committee reports. First, we will have the Planning and Capital Programs Committee.
Madam Chair.
By Mr. Pond.
Madam Chair, before I begin, I think that we need for both of the two resolutions for approval, need eight voting board members, and I'll defer to Peter to respond to that.
Yeah, thank you, sir. One A needs eight members to be present to vote for that. One B can move forward as it is under the threshold.
So therefore, we need to defer one A?
Yes, ma'am, if we can defer one A until the next board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, so noted.
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, August 25, 2022, and approved the following resolution. B Resolution authorizing the disposal of permanent easements to the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of $49,900 for traffic signal upgrades at State Route 154 Lee Street at three locations in Fulton County. I request approval of these resolutions, of this resolution.
Let us, let us vote? Do we have a second? Did we get a second? My screen is slowly... Show the second here. Let us vote. Resolution is passed.
The committee also received the following briefings, the Summer Hill Bus Rapid Transit Significant Change, the Cost and Schedule, and second, a briefing on the Clayton County Justice Center Transit Hub update. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pond. Now we will hear from the Operations and Safety Committee. Mr. Floyd?
Well, that's why I have this, okay, all right. I'm not sure where the chair is today, but he's not here, that's obvious, isn't it? Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, August 25, 2022, and received the following briefings, Operations Planning and Controls Overview and Transit Master Version 19 Update. Madam Chair, this concludes the report of the Operations and Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Floyd. At this time, we will hear from the Business Management Committee, Mrs. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, August 25, 2022, and approved the following resolutions. A, Resolution authorizing renewal of authority's privacy and network cybersecurity liability insurance coverage, 2022 to '23. B, Resolution authorizing a modification and contractual authorization for the services contract with Talented Talent Connections LLC, LOAL 50057. I request approval of these resolutions.
Thank you. We have a second? Let, let us vote? So moved, the resolutions have passed.
The committee also received the following briefing, see preliminary unaudited FY 2022 Year End Financial Highlights. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Are there any other matters to come before the board? I believe so, Mr. Peters?
Yes, ma'am. Following executive session, we have three matters. The first is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement, the owners of 575 Morosco Drive, Northeast Atlanta, Georgia 30324, for short-term relocation of annex employees, whereas employees are currently located in the MARTA annex facility at 2400 Piedmont Road, Atlanta, Georgia 30324, an obsolete building in need of significant investment, and whereas the staff has determined that MARTA employees need to be relocated on a short-term basis, and whereas Section 16G of the MARTA Act of 1965, as amended, permits MARTA the power to acquire property, both real and personal, or rights of easements therein, or franchise necessary convening for the purposes of the authority, by gifts, purchase, lease as leasing or contract, and whereas lease terms are being negotiated to house employees at 575 Morosco Drive, for a three-year initial term with a three, with three one-year extension options for total gross payments, rental payments equal to $13,650,000 for the initial term, and whereas the MARTA Board of Directors approve the FY 23 Capital Project List, which includes a line item for facilities master plan, and it will be used for tracking expenses for this effort resolved therefore by the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, that the interim general manager, CEO, or his delegate is hereby authorized to do all acts, perform all things, and execute on behalf of the authority all instruments of conveyance, other instruments and agreements as necessary to effectuate the execution of lease documents with the owners of 575 Morosco Drive, Atlanta, Georgia 30324, on behalf of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority in the amount of $13,650,000 in gross rental payments for the initial three-year term.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor? Thank you, let us raise our hands and vote for the motion. So moved, the resolution has passed.
Thank you. The next matter is the need for approval of a settlement with Shawn Gonzalez in the amount of $235,000 in Georgia Workers Comp Board Claim Number 2013-002612.
I have a motion? Move in second, let us vote. Raise your hand. Resolution has passed.
Thank you. The final matter that I'd bring before you today is a request, request to approve a settlement with Delvin Samuels in the amount of $800,000 in the case of Delvin Samuels versus Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority and Gary Broyles, Fulton County Superior Court Civil Action Number 2021 CV 352209.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Let us vote, raise your hands. The request that resolution has passed. Are there any other matters? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the board? Hearing none. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.